A Pledge of Allegiance.
A Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Under God.
Liberty.
Liberty.
We got Sam.
Thank you all, and welcome to the Board of Aldermen meeting. Uh, we will begin first with the minutes of the previous meeting, October nineteenth, twenty twenty, I believe these were emailed to you earlier.
I'll move to the approval.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or changes to the minutes? I am seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We are on to outside the rail. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the board on matters not on the agenda? And if so, just speak up, because I do see a number of unidentified callers. Alright, I'm hearing nothing. So we will move on to communications from the mayor, Mayor Lair.
Okay, thank you very much. So, um, I just had one, uh, topic I wanted to touch on tonight, and that is going to be, uh, a quick, uh, synopsis of the proposed fiscal twenty twenty-two Rowland City municipal budget that I said to everyone on Saturday. Um, you all have the cover letter, which accompanies the budget. I could tell you, uh, with the twenty-two percent increase in the proposed Blue Cross, uh, costs, which are going to take effect January one, the ongoing pandemic that we have been all experiencing and continue to experience, it looks like it's going to go on for another while, uh, what that means for the future revenues here in the city, which we're not sure of, uh, and, and growth. This spending plan was probably one of the most challenging ones that I have had to, uh, um, uh, put forth in my four years as mayor. I want to, uh, just take a quick second to thank publicly once again my department heads and my administrative assistant Judy Frazier for all of their hard work and support over the last several weeks. I tried to balance the needs to retain city services at an optimal level while acknowledging the challenges of COVID and, uh, the challenges that all our city taxpayers are facing. I think we have tried to do that as best we can. Uh, we are saving significant amount, uh, amount of money, uh, in this budget by not filling vacant positions and eliminating them when appropriate. Uh, we have one in DPW and one in, um, uh, uh, Parks and Rec. There are no layoffs in this budget, and there are no new positions. We, as you know, by my life, we tried to negotiate, renegotiate our Blue Cross Blue Shield rates. However, the proposal that we put forward and we came up with, with Blue Cross that we put forth, uh, to the unions, which we needed, um, uh, union support from, uh, across the board, um, uh, and we needed their sign off. We were unable to acquire that sign off. Uh, we did, uh, in this budget, we, um, I caught a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck that was proposed in the DPW budget that was brought by the commissioner. We also lowered our pension contribution by three hundred thousand dollars in a one-time cut, and I will emphasize one-time cut. I, uh, did this after considerable consultation with Treasurer Markowski, who had spoken to our actuary prior to this decision being made. None of these decisions were easy, but they were all necessary. I look forward to the budget meetings that we're going to have in the next four to six weeks to discuss, uh, uh, the, this budget, uh, in more detail. I will continue to keep myself available at all evenings, and, uh, the chairs, go ahead and schedule your meetings, and I will make myself available. Um, we have copies, hard copies of the budget that have been put together today. They are sitting down in the treasurer's, or excuse me, in the clerk's office, and they are available for you to come down and pick up at your leisure in the next, uh, couple of days. So those, those are available. As I said in my message, the be- the budget is up one point two percent from last March's voter-approved budget. Uh, and as well, as you all know, and that's an apples-to-apples comparison, uh, but as you all know, we did make rescissions in the summertime. Uh, those were done under an emergency provision that was put forth by the Vermont State Legislature. I don't think that's going to be able to do on an ongoing basis, but we were able to shave one eight hundred thousand dollars of savings off, uh, of the budget that was, uh, the, uh, tax rate was, uh, uh, based on. So, um, uh, comparing what we have here to what that, uh, number finally came in at, we're up about four point nine percent. Um, I hope to work very closely with the, uh, Aldermen, uh, over the next, uh, and Alderwomen over the next few weeks to see if there's any other savings we could come up with, uh, before we, uh, present that to the voters. So, um, you know, last thing I'll say is, uh, reminding everyone, and not everyone, because a lot of people have already voted. Uh, I think we're up to around, um, uh, forty percent of our registered voters that have already voted early. Uh, and I encourage anyone who has not to, uh, get out and vote tomorrow. So I will leave it there. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lair. Alderwoman Humphrey?
Ah, hang on. Sorry. Uh, thanks. I just have a procedural question, I think, for the chair. Um, could you please send around a list of the budgets and which, uh, committee they fall under? Um, just as a reminder, some of them are pretty obvious, but I know, uh, with the General Committee in particular, there's several, and I, I don't want to miss any. Thanks.
Certainly, we'll follow up with that. Alderman Gillum?
Oh, do we have to make a motion, send those to committee? Board of Order?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay.
Aldermin Tori?
Um, I actually did think we had to make a motion, um, to refer them to committees. Um, we have in the, in the previous, but before I do that, um, I just wanted to, uh, thank the mayor for, um, uh, the budget. I, I, there's a lot of hard decisions that you had to make, um, and, uh, I appreciate that you've been listening over the past years, and a lot of the cuts are, uh, ones that I would support. So, um, I, I really appreciate of the hard decisions that you made for this, this budget. Um, with that, I will make a motion to refer the budget to the appropriate committee.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion. It's been seconded to send the budgets to their appropriate respective committees. Uh, any discussion or debate on that referral? I am hearing, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And I will follow up this week with a list of where everything falls for people. Are there any further questions of Mayor Lair? Very good. Thank you, Mayor Lair.
You're welcome.
Um, we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. I have none. So we will move on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First up, we have Superintendent Peters. Rec Updates. These are pages one through three of your packet. Superintendent Peters?
Hi, thank you. So I want to first start by, uh, thanking Jeff Pratt. Jeff, um, retired on Friday after thirty-eight years of service with the rec. Um, he started at the rec as his, uh, when he was sixteen at Rotary, um, Park where, when it was an ice rink. Um, I asked Jeff what has changed the most within the Recreation Department. And what he's mentioned so far is, um, how much everything is streamlined and very much science within, uh, the rec maintenance department. And he has said at this point right now, the maintenance department is the best it's been, um, the camaraderie, the connection with the program directors. And I just want to say, I mean, it was an honor to work with him. So if you see him, you know him, please send a thank you to him. Um, what a great person, you know, always a smile. He does all the lining of the field. So I just want to take some time to publicly, uh, recognize, um, Jeff Pratt. So, um, I did send a couple. I did send a couple, uh, pieces of paper out just to talk a little bit about revenue, um, and how COVID has somewhat affected us, um, in regards to where we're at right now. Um, currently, we're at two hundred and forty-two thousand of revenue that has come in. Last year at this time, we're, we were at two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So we're actually not too far off, and it's, it's largely, um, to the grants that we've been able to receive for the childcare, central care we've been doing, um, and our summer camps. When, you know, we were one of the only places that were offering summer camps, and we tripled our numbers. So a large part is due to that. Um, what has complete, has definitely been a detriment to us during COVID's georgedy, the, the entire complex, um, with it being an indoor complex, we were not able. Uh, the COVID hit right in March, we didn't get any games in for indoor turf. That's a twenty thousand dollar revenue maker that we have come in, so we didn't see that. Uh, Flipside Skate Park was another one that we typically will see about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars coming in. Adult softball, uh, we didn't have a season at all this year. Um, hopefully we will let next year, but that's another twenty thousand that we typically see. And our Rutland Youth Theater was not able to do two, uh, two shows. Uh, so even with that, I feel confident of where we're at. I also just went back a few more years, um, prior to me being here, and about this time, um, revenue was at about a hundred and fifty thousand. So we've made, we've made strides. Of course, this, this is also, um, with the pool being open, um, and, you know, other programs that we've been offering. So wanted to kind of just touch on that a little bit. Um, I owed a few of you some information on where we were with the, uh, Rutland Rec Community Center. So if you look at the sheet, the revenue actual, um, which only has five months. Okay, so we opened in November, we closed in March, we were at fifty-four thousand. Now, a large part of that was rentals specifically from Rutland Public Schools because they utilized our facility, and so that was a fee. Um, what I'm predicting for the next year, um, we'll call it next fiscal year, but we're already starting to see an uptick in, in, um, membership coming in and rentals coming in. I'm looking conservatively at a sixty-five thousand dollar revenue, um, coming in from the Rutland Rec Community Center. That's memberships, sponsorships, rentals, and grants. Um, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there, and also, you know, I, we are one of the, um, departments that is able to create revenue, and that is something that's important to me. I strive on it. I love it. Um, and I think the piece of that that we don't see in our budget is, you know, what happens with when we do get the tournaments that are coming here and, you know, what that means to us. It is, it is revenue that, um, the downtown will be receiving from that. It's, it's, there's a huge impact when you have youth sports in the area. Um, we're doing a lot of studies right now on other areas that are similar to ours. So if you bring in a hundred teams, like we were going to do last year with, uh, AAU, it brings in a significant amount of revenue to the downtown area, whether it's hotels, eating out, um, buying gas, so on and so forth. So, uh, really excited about what's been going on, um, what, what we've seen so far with, with, uh, the Rutland Rec Community Center. Obviously, with the weather changing, we've seen an influx of kids, adults, uh, active seniors coming in. As of about two hours ago, we're up to two hundred members just, um, and it's November second for the month of, of November. Um, so that's, that's been really going well, of course. We've had some meetings. We just got done with all the flu shots. Um, and we're actually scheduled for, if there needs to be some sort of recount in the state of Vermont, we are scheduled to help with that at the gym because we have a large enough facility. Um, so yeah, that's really all I have. I just wanted to do a quick update, and, um, especially the night before the vote, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to answer those.
Peters, uh, Alderman Russo?
Yes, I'm just curious, what's a member?
A membership. So if, when you come to the facility, you, uh, become a member, and it's ten dollars a month to be a member. So that gives you access to, um, we get a lot of people that come in just to walk or to play basketball or to play racquetball. Um, now, ten dollars a member, but that's for, um, adults, so sixth grade and under are free with their parents.
So for a hundred and twenty dollars a year, everybody's, that's what it costs everybody, a hundred and twenty, if, ten dollars a month for twelve months is a hundred and twenty a year?
Currently, right now, that is the price that we have put out there.
For, for Rutland City, Rutland Town, West Rutland, anybody?
Correct, for now, yes.
Okay, so plus, plus this comes out of our taxes, but the West Rutland and Rutland Town people don't pay taxes on it?
Correct. So Sam, right, when we first started, we weren't sure how we wanted to go about this. So we don't have a very complex system to be able to, to do some of the things that we want to be able to do. One of the ideas that I've had and tossed around the rec, the rec committee was going to the different towns, like a Rutland Town or a West Rutland, and this is of course when, if we have the, the facility in stating, do you want to put some sort of money into this? If, if that's not the avenue, then we would start charging, um, non-residents a fee different than residents.
Okay, I, I'd like to say, I understand. I mean, I, you're talking to someone who, who it drives me crazy, we pay like the motor vehicle department, and then we have to pay for license plates. Okay, I've had this problem for a long time, but to, 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 to have voters have to pay for a service and then have to pay to use the service, and then to have out-of-town people pay the same price but not come out of their taxes, and it's not something you, you're doing. The world seems to be doing it. It just, I just wanted to hear that, you know, what, how we handle it. So that's my, my answer, my question's been answered. Thank you very much.
Alderwoman Davis?
So, Kim, I, I want to say, um, I think you've done a tremendous job in a difficult, difficult situation. And I'm very appreciative to all the revenue, um, that you have brought in. It offsets, um, costs, and it certainly helps all the taxpayers. I think this facility has been used for a lot more than recreation and has the potential to be used for a lot more, um, than recreations, that issues that may affect our community going forward. So, um, I know I have voted, I voted yes, and I hope that, uh, other people do as well. It's an important part of the community, and thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Alderwoman Davis. Uh, any additional questions for Superintendent Peters? I am seeing none. Thank you so much for being with us tonight and for all the work you're doing.
Thank you. I did have one more thing to add. I, I forgot at the beginning to, um, I also wanted to just publicly thank um, a couple sponsors that came in, um, during the Halloween events. We serviced over five hundred kids, um, for, through our drive-through service and our four sessions. And, um, the following donated a lot of candy. Um, Kiwanis, Bon Toffee dropped that off last week, um, in partnership with Walmart. Hannaford donated, and this was really cool. Flagship Cinema, um, who is not operating right now, had boxes and boxes of candy. When they found out what we were doing, they dropped that off as well. So I just, I, I really wanted to put that out there, and I hope I didn't miss anyone. Also, Key Club from the high school also donated and helped with the event. So it, it, it just was a great week of events for the rec, um, despite not being able to do the parade. And we saw that a lot of towns came for us, not just us, to help make a safe, um, safe experience for the kids and the families. So I, I wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Peters. Um, up next, we have Commissioner Wenberg, Contract Award Recommendation, pages four and five of your packet.
Okay, um, you folks have had a chance to look at the memo. This is the follow-up to the, um, authorization that you provided earlier for, uh, the mayor to go out and seek, uh, proposals to get this work done. Um, we had actually an excellent response as the attachment, uh, shows. Um, there's kind of a wide variety of prices from, uh, nine, I believe it was nine different, um, consulting firms. Um, after reviewing it, the Jim, uh, City Engineer and Assistant City Engineer evaluated the, uh, proposals and were very comfortable recommending the, uh, the low, um, proposer. Their actual price, uh, for the stated scope of work was eight thousand five twenty-seven sixteen, and you'll notice that number in the footnote on the memo. Um, the request is for a contract amount not to exceed ten thousand. And the reason for that is, as they go through their, um, evaluation and site investigation, they may need, they may determine that they need to drill another monitoring well or do something like that. And so there's a possibility that that, um, that price could go up depending on what they find. That's not unusual. Um, the Petroleum, uh, Cleanup Fund, the PCF, has a ten thousand dollar deductible, which is, that's a state program. So, um, no matter what the cost is beyond ten thousand dollars, that would be the limit of our expense, both to investigate and then if need be remediate. So, um, the request is for an approval not to exceed ten thousand, so we would have authorization up to the full, um, deductible that we would be responsible for. This is the work that the state recently requested that we do that is essentially the same as work done in the nineteen nineties for exactly the same purpose on exactly the same site. But, um, neither the state nor we have been able to find in the records a, uh, a document which officially closes the site, closes meaning the state determines that it's good to go and that no further work or investigations are needed. And since they recently, meaning, uh, several months ago, uh, determined that they couldn't find that document, they're requiring us to do this again. Um, so we have gone back and forth multiple times with the folks at DEC. Um, we're quite comfortable that they're not going to find anything heinous because if they found that back in the nineteen nineties, we wouldn't be having this exercise now. But, uh, they are not inclined to accept, um, data from studies that took place that long ago, twenty, twenty-five years ago. Uh, and, uh, according to standards that were in place that long ago, which have changed since then as well. So, um, try as we might, we have been unsuccessful in dissuading them from requiring us to do this, so we are recommending, um, this. The, uh, I've proposed to, uh, fund this out of the Streets Department Professional Services line. That line is zero-funded. That is to say, there's no, there's no dollars in the budget for that. So what I'm proposing to do there is to simply, uh, have our folks manage through the balance of the year, uh, the spending in the other lines in the Streets budget to make sure that we have, uh, up to ten thousand dollars, um, available at the end of the year to cover these unbudgeted costs. So that's the base, the background and the basis of the recommendation.
Commissioner Wenberg? Alderwoman Davis?
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Uh, Alderwoman Humphrey?
Thanks. Um, Commissioner Wenberg, so, uh, I would love to take the, uh, lowest, uh, bid. Um, in this case, I'm a little bit hesitant because it's significantly lower, and there's quite a range of, of prices there. Um, not to say that's still not the best choice, but are you able to kind of pinpoint a reason or two as to why they're significantly less? I mean, there's, this one was like eight thousand, the others are like twelve, twenty-something, a couple twenty-somethings, and then one like over sixty. So they're all just, they're kind of all over the map.
Um, I, I spoke with, I didn't do the evaluation myself. This was done by, um, Jim Rotondo and, and Ted Gillan. And, um, I spoke with, I asked Jim the same thing. I said, I like the price. Are you comfortable that their scope and, uh, you know, their qualifications, their, you know, their capabilities are, you know, not going to shortchange us and we end up spending more in the long run? And he was very comfortable. They'd spoken quite a bit with the firm. Actually, they felt that the scope that, um, KAS, uh, proposed was better than a couple of the more expensive ones, uh, more complete. Um, and they were also, uh, relatively comfortable that they had the, uh, the bandwidth to, to, uh, to get the work done. And it was a good, it was a good proposal. So they were also a little skeptical upfront, um, because we've never worked with them before. They, we don't have a relationship with this Williston firm. Um, but after investigation and evaluation of all of the proposals, they felt that this was, um, you know, a hundred percent complete, that they had all the qualifications, and there was no reason not to choose them. Um, even though there were other firms that we had, uh, that certainly could do a good job as well, but, you know, for double the money, it just made no sense. So I don't know if, and I don't think Jim is on. If he is, I'd encourage him to jump in, but, um, I, I don't know if they're just anxious to, uh, to start working in this part of the state and to develop relationships. Um, but he assured me that they were comfortable after interviewing them, that, um, that they were very comfortable making this recommendation, and and I can assure you, Jim doesn't, uh, doesn't just go for the low price. He, he, it has to be very, very comfortable that, um, all of these consulting engineers are, are properly qualified.
Wenberg? Um, are there other questions regarding this? I'm hearing and seeing none. So we have a motion. It's been seconded to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for professional services to prepare a site investigation work plan and conduct an initial site investigation for subsurface contamination at the Spruce Street Highway Garage for an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
I thought we just had a motion to suspend.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, motion to suspend first. Okay. Perfect. Alright, all those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And then I'll move your motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that has been seconded. Are there any further discussion, debate, or questions for Commissioner? Hearing and seeking none. All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Wenberg.
Thank you all.
Alright, we are now moving on to reports of standing committees. Up first, we have Aldermin Tori, Finance Committee. I believe she emailed this to all of us.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for the delay in sending it to you. I emailed it around six-thirty tonight. So the Finance Committee met on October twenty-eighth to discuss two agenda items, the FY twenty-fourth quarter Treasurer's Report and FY twenty-one first quarter Treasurer's Report. Committee members present were myself, Alderwoman Davis, Humphrey, and Alderman Russo. Other Aldermen present were Mattis and Whitcomb. Others present were Treasurer Markowski and Assistant City Treasurer Lynn Humphrey. The committee convened at five-thirty-five via go-to-meeting video conferencing to discuss the FY twenty-year-end Treasurer's Report as well as the FY twenty-one first quarter Treasurer's Report. The Treasurer pointed out that the June twenty-twenty financials were surprisingly good, given the impacts of the pandemic. She discussed the revenues and expenses reported, noting the administration and department heads did a good job of keeping costs down to end the year strongly, including DPW not purchasing a budgeted vehicle. Additionally, the city benefited from surprisingly strong RME receipts, an increase in pilot payments, a receipt of some FEMA reimbursement, and a surplus from the Rowland County Solid Waste District. The Treasurer also noted that due to the volatility in the stock market in March, she moved the investment into more secure products to ensure the principal, so the return was less than budgeted. On expenses, the Treasurer noted the challenges to expenses with about sixty-eight percent of the total budget related to payroll and associated costs. The city did better than anticipated in collections as well, all of which led to a higher-than-expected unassigned fund balance, which will help when we set the tax rate in July. Regarding the proprietary funds, revenues for the water and sewer funds were down due to, due to the pandemic, and unfortunately, expenses are high. and unfortunately, expenses are higher. DPW is watching this carefully. The parking fund was also discussed again, with the treasurer voicing concern that the expenses will surpass revenue if something is not done for this fund. The treasurer will provide the committee with some parking debt. The committee is unsure where this discussion for parking, parking revenues should occur. Moving to the second agenda item, in looking at the first quarter of FY twenty one, the treasurer said that it looks like expenditures are in line with budgeted amounts. He also shared with us the balances in all of the funds and an explanation for each. That sheet is attached here. The treasurer is watching cash flow in preparation for any challenges COVID-nineteen might create. She said that tax collections appear normal and that the expectation is that will continue. Additionally, she said that her office is reaching out proactively to people who are falling behind to catch them before it gets worse and help them find resources to address their delinquencies before it goes to tax sale. The meeting concluded at six fifteen, and this was for information only.
Thank you, Alderman Natori. Are there any questions for members of the board for Alderman Natori? I am hearing and seeing none. Thank you. So we will move on to Alderwoman Mattis, Charter and Ordinance, pages six through ten of your packet.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to say first that the annotations that Tara Kelly made in advance of the meeting were then further modified so that if anything is confusing, you can look at those annotations. And all of the revised, uh, the revised amendments to the zoning bylaws were emailed out by Henry, I believe, on Friday. So we have those as well to look at. Uh, so the Charter and Ordinance Committee met on the twentieth of October. Members present were myself, Bill Gillum, and Sam Gurusso. Others present were Matt Whitcomb, Sharon Davis, Tom DePoy, Michael Talbot, Paul Clifford, Tara Kelly, Susan Schreidman, Dave Cooper, Brennan Duffy, and Gordon Ricillo. Uh, the remote meeting was called to order at five thirty PM. The purpose of the meeting was to review suggested amendments to the zoning bylaws in advance of a public hearing to be held November sixteenth. The whole Board of Aldermen will discuss these amendments November two and make any desired changes. After a brief introduction, the chair turned the meeting over to zoning administrator Tara Kelly, who reviewed and explained each change, all of which were summarized in a memo she provided. Most amendments are being suggested in order to comply with state statute or to clarify existing bylaws and will not be further explained in these minutes since the explanations are in the memo. Alderman Gurusso questioned the removal of language regarding thirty-one dash two oh eight D terms and removal procedures for members of the Development Review Board. The committee agreed this language should be put back in as the bylaws exist now, and if desired, the Board of Aldermen can discuss it. The committee discussed the creation of a new zoning district, the Campus Development District, occupying the former campus of the College of St. Joseph. The intent of the district is to support development within the district while retaining significant natural features and respecting established neighborhoods. Alderman DePoy asked about the uses that are not allowed within the district, specifically bars, and noted that there used to be a bar on the campus. Tara clarified that if, for example, a permitted use such as a residential healthcare facility contained a juice bar, that bar would be incidental to the residential facility and therefore would not be in question as a prohibited use. There was some discussion about the prohibition of any fossil fuel pipeline right-of-way terminal or distribution facility in the district. It was agreed that this language would be brought to the full board for discussion. The discussion moved to home occupations, which are defined by state statute. Alderman DePoy questioned the provision that home occupations shall not produce mechanical noise audible beyond the property lines. There is already a prohibition against excessive noise, but this is a new prohibition against mechanical noises specifically, which has been a problem for some neighbors of home occupations in the past. It was decided to bring this question to the whole board. We discussed the new waiver provision. Up until now, the city has been granting variances, which ought to be very specific under state statute, and they do not hold up in court the way the city has been doing them. For this reason, a section on waivers was added to the zoning bylaws. Also, a separate section was added about accessory structures. The city is bound to follow state law in this matter. Brennan Duffy questioned the new language describing the makeup of the Architectural Review Committee, and I have a note about that after my meeting minutes, as you shall see. We return to accessory structures and a provision for an exception for the rules, which is currently practiced, that allows for neighboring property owners to consent to the placing of an accessory structure along the property line abutted by said neighbors. The committee agreed to strike this exception because we did not believe that building accessory structures against the property line was a good idea as it may cause problems with future neighbors who did not give their permission, especially around maintenance of the structures. And the meeting adjourned around seven forty-five PM. So my notes are as follows. Um, by the time Brennan Duffy had questioned the language about the makeup of the Architectural Review Committee, the committee had lost a quorum. And so after the meeting adjourned, um, I asked Tara to strike the new language about the Architectural Review Committee and suggested that the question be included in the larger discussions of the zoning rewrite that are ongoing and, and not decide that tonight with these zoning amendments. Um, the duties and makeup of the Architectural Review Committee do need to be clarified, but it's not an urgent matter for now. Also, after the meeting adjourned, Tara realized that she had not reviewed the changes to the planned office park district with the committee, and so she will do so tonight, um, right after my report. Any changes to the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws can be moved tonight, uh, the November two meeting of the Board of Aldermen, if any member so desires, and this report is for information only. And I, um, believe that the best thing to do at this point is to hear from Tara, finish her report about the planned office park, and then, um, I'm going to move to, I will move to accept the, the, the amendments as presented, and then people can move to amend that motion if they so choose. Um, so I'm wondering, Mr. President, if, um, you can ask Tara to chime in.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Alderwoman Mattis. Tara, are you on the line? We'll have you jump in now if you're with us.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Um, so my apologies for skipping past this when we were reviewing it in committee. Um, the section that I'm referring to is thirty-one three fourteen. It's Planned Office Park District. This is the district that largely encompasses Allen Street and parts of Stratton Road around the hospital. So, um, there's, there's one fairly straightforward change that I, that I think should not be of, of concern, I don't think, to anyone. Um, and that is, there are two uses that are not, currently not listed as permitted or conditional in this district, but which are located there and it seems to make sense that they would continue to exist in the future and, and that new ones may be added as well. So I've added the uses of medical clinic and skilled nursing facility. Um, so that's my proposal, is that those two uses be added into this district. Uh, it hasn't makes, made sense to me that they're not there, and I wasn't sure if anyone with history knew if that was an intentional decision by someone in the past. But if not, then I think it makes sense for them to be simply listed as permitted uses. And the second, um, element of change within this district is because it is, um, often, uh, there is a lot of, a lot of redevelopment that occurs here. Um, as recently as this past year, there's been new buildings going up, and we have no site plan review within this district. And it's caused a couple of issues because when I review things simply from a zoning administrative standpoint for a zoning permit, it doesn't allow for me to really get into some of the issues that cropped up. Um, some examples have been, uh, traffic circulation, and that does seem to be important along Allen Street and Stratton Road. And another was, um, stormwater. There, there, this is part of a watershed that, that is a concern for the city. And, um, there was a situation where that was not able to be reviewed, um, under the current bylaws. So I've, I suggest that for uses of a certain size, and I went through that district, you'll see stars or asterisks next to those uses, that those be subject to some, to site plan review. Um, in the cases where there were new buildings being, being done or there'll be additions to existing buildings over five hundred square feet and/or alterations that result, result in changes to traffic circulation around and within a site. Um, so those are the two things within that district that are significant enough that the board really ought to weigh in and, and decide if those amendments make sense. And that's my description, and I turn it over to you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any discussion, debate, questions? Alderwoman Mattis, you suggested that you wanted to make a motion.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to move that the Board of Aldermen, uh, accept, I don't know if that's the correct word, uh, accept the proposed zoning bylaw amendments as presented.
Alderwoman Davis?
I'll second for debate.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, Alderwoman Davis, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, that's okay. I just, um, I'm going to add an amendment that we amend the campus district development in regards to G ten and remove that language. The language deals with the fossil fuel pipeline right-of-way terminal or distribution facility. And the reason I say that is, um, the Board of Aldermen is not in the business of prohibiting business. So whether or not any of this occurs is a question. But if it occurs, will also be ample opportunities for public comment. But it, we, we don't give a business who may need a natural gas pipeline an opportunity to locate here if we continue with the language. So my motion is to, uh, remove G ten from the campus district development.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, and we have an amendment, and that has been seconded. So let's take this one right now. Is there any discussion or debate amongst the board about striking the language referred to by Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Mattis?
Yeah, I, there is no plan to, right now, of bringing a gas pipeline to Rutland City. Uh, it is not being talked about at all. Um, and so it's, this language right now is almost symbolic. And in a way, um, you know, to argue about it is like standing in the, in the grocery aisle arguing about what flavor ice cream when you want to buy, that you want to buy, and, and there's no ice cream at all in the, uh, in the freezer. So it's really not a, it's not something that we're discussing on policy now. It's, it's almost more of a, of a statement that we want, want to make for the future. And I think it has to do with what our goals are for the city of Rutland. And definitely, there's an argument to be made that a gas pipeline is part of an economically responsible future for Rutland City. Um, but I think there's other considerations to be thought of as to the economic future of Rutland City. Um, one of the things that I think of is a viable ski industry, which we depend on very much. And, uh, one of the big threats to the viable ski industry is climate change. Um, one of the best ways to not make climate change worse is to not, build new fossil fuel infrastructure. So that being the case, although I totally understand Alderwoman Davis's argument, um, I will vote no, uh, for that reason on the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Mattis. Alderman DePoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just want to point out that natural gas has a zero net carbon emission. Um, so as far as natural gas goes, I don't want to shut down anything that could benefit this region in the future. Um, yes, there's no pipeline that's being currently talked about. However, in the very recent past, it has been talked about, about bringing it down from, uh, wherever they've ended off at this point, um, down to Rutland. And if that happens, then I don't want to shut down a certain sector of the city, which could benefit from that. Um, so I, I think it's better left out at this point. And if a future board sees the need to insert it, they can. But for now, I think we leave it out. We leave the option open in case that does happen at some point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Alderman Gurusso?
Yes, uh, the way it was explained to me, and I really have to tell Tara again, I, this is all like a, a, a whole different language to me. But with this pipeline, I worked two summers at the wastewater treatment plant when I was home from college. And, uh, I remember our, our sewage treatment plant burning off methane, just burning it off in the sky, and now we're going to five digesters, which would produce a heck of a lot more. And over the years, I thought, what a great thing it would have been to pipe that over to buildings or pipe it over to the, to the college or whatever and let them use that gas to heat the school. So that would preclude us being able to use, uh, that gas. So I, I, I think no pipeline. And the other thing I would disagree with, uh, on, on this concept of no pipeline would, it, it's, if, if you put it in the books, someone could look it up and say, oh, the Rutland doesn't like pipelines, so we're not going there, we're not going to consider Rutland. So I think Alderman Davis is right. I think this is something that could be damaging, and we have to be pro-business. We need all the business we can get and industry we can get. And, uh, let's, I'd rather have somebody here knocking on our door wanting to come in and, and make use of a pipeline than nobody at all. So I support the motion.
Thank you, Alderman Gurusso. Alderman Gillon?
Yes, um, a lot of people already know what I think because it was in the paper the other day. But, um, there is other opportunities. As I went to Japan and we found how they move their infrastructure around, how they move fuel, propane, gas, uh, how they move their fiber optics and all that. They used all the same pipeline. Uh, maybe we should take a page from that book and, uh, put all those utilities in one spot. Um, I think that's an opportunity. And I think closing the door on that opportunity is not smart at this point. I think it's very important we keep some of these things in the toolbox for economic development to use if it's needed down the road. Um, but to close the door on it at this time is not wise. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gillon. Alderwoman Mattis?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm pretty sure that methane from sewage digesters wouldn't be considered a fossil fuel. I just wanted to point that out. Um, that's all, thank you.
But it could go on a pipeline. It could go on a pipeline, that's why I brought it up.
Is there any further discussion or, or amendment? Hearing and seeing none, I'm just going to go ahead and initiate a vote. We, we have an amendment to our original motion of accepting a proposed zoning bylaw. It would, it strikes the language from this document regarding the pipeline. I'm going to turn it over to Clerk Hacks to take the vote. Alderman Gurusso?
Yes.
Alder, Humphrey?
No.
Alderwoman? Alderwoman Ryan?
No.
Alderman Etori?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
No.
Alderwoman Mattis?
No.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
Alderman Depoy?
Yes.
Alderwoman Davis?
Yes.
Six-four, looks like you're following. All right, the vote is six yes for no. Motion or amendment carries. So we have a motion with the amendment to accept the proposed zoning bylaws with striking the language regarding the pipeline. Is there any further discussion, debate, or suggestions? I'm sharing and seeing none. So all those in favor of, Alderman Garuso?
Yeah, real quick question, because I'm so confused. How about where Tara mentioned the medical clinics, skilled nursing facilities, all that stuff, is that in here or out of there, or is that just the street? What are we, it's in there?
Alderwoman Mattis?
Yeah, if I may, unless Tara wants to jump in, yes, the language about skilled nursing facilities is in here, as well as a site plan review for the planned Office Park. So if you approve the motion, you would be approving those two uses in the planned Office Park as well as site plan review.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, debate, or suggestions, all those in favor of accepting the motion as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, I believe we are now on to reports of select committees. Alderman Etori, the marketing committee, this was also emailed to all of us.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were two agenda items, and so I have a motion halfway through, so I'll stop and we'll take that up, and then I'll finish the report if that would work for you. So the marketing committee met on Tuesday, October 27th with two agenda items, the regional marketing initiative and downtown business programs. The committee members present were Alderman Etori, Gillum, Garuso, Ryan, and Talbot. Other Alderman presents were Davis, Depoy, Humphrey, Mattis, and Board President Wickham. Others present were Lyle Jepson, the Executive Director of Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region, Russ Marson of Carpenter &amp; Co., Laurie Mesier-Bourcheu of Four Seasons Sotheby's, Brennan Duffy from the RRA, Steve Peters from Rutland Partnership, and Gordon Ricciolo from the Rutland Herald. Convinced at 5:35 PM via go-to-meeting video conferencing platform. Lyle Jepson from the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region began the presentation by sharing the financial investment and expenditures to date. He shared that just over $482,000 has been raised in total over the past four years, with $138,000 coming from Rutland City, $270,000 from the business community, and the remaining $75,000 coming from other municipalities and grants. The largest expenses have been $270,000 for the creation of the website and the digital asset, mostly through Mondo, and approximately $150,000 spent in advertising. Lyle then discussed what this initiative looks like moving forward. He shared that LIFT, the agency hired last year to carry out the marketing campaign, has created a proposal for how to best position the Rutland Region to benefit from the many people looking to move to communities like ours. One key element is the use of the 5,000 email addresses that have been gathered over the past four years, the results of the previous year's investments. The addresses will be put through an automated process, matching the leads with their interests through targeted marketing and outreach emails. Those who show interest will be connected with a concierge, a local community member who serves as an instant connection to the region to help answer questions or give guidance. Russ Marson from Carpenter &amp; Co. shared his perspective on the importance of investing in the marketing campaign for long-term success. He cited some of the people he employs who came through this initiative and others who have invested in properties in the city contributing to strengthening the grand list. Laurie Mesier-Bourcheu from Four Seasons Sotheby's discussed the importance of positivity and creativity in the region, and how she has seen the results of this around the state through her role with the Chamber and in her interactions with potential buyers. Alderwoman Davis asked about the number of towns who are contributing. Lyle responded that as of now, including Rutland City, there have been 12 towns who have funded the campaign. Alderwoman Davis also asked if part of this initiative was to recruit businesses. Lyle responded that the marketing campaign is aimed at bringing people here, but will also support businesses that may be interested in coming to Rutland. Alderman Garuso discussed the importance of branding and suggested we need to brand ourselves better to sell ourselves apart. Alderman Wickham asked about the demographic data on who's interested in coming to Rutland. Laurie told the committee that it's really a mix of people, older people as well as younger people who feel our region is safer, and particular people who want to be connected to the community and perhaps start or run a local business. Laurie also mentioned that houses have been selling quickly, with sales at all price points. Alderman Talbot discussed his experience as a film and communications faculty who relocated to Rutland. He also spoke in favor of the marketing initiative effort and the quality of the communications it has generated. Alderwoman Davis asked for the marketing steering committee to be flexible and responsive so that we could take advantage of patterns or opportunities that might emerge. Chamber and Economic Development is requesting that all towns contribute approximately $1 per person. Alderman Talbot moved to recommend to the full board the approval of $16,000 for the regional marketing initiative from those of my fund. The motion passed 5-0, and I so move.
Back it.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Sharing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Etori?
Thank you. The regional marketing campaign will stay in committee for future updates. The second item on the agenda was a discussion of the downtown business program. Alderman Garuso had requested this be sent to committee after reading an article in the Herald. His concern was the role the Downtown Partnership had in business development and if they worked with the Chamber and Economic Development. Alderman Garuso spoke of his interest in making connections between different groups, but also involving the banks and local industry and businesses. Steve Peters, Executive Director of the Downtown Rutland Partnership, spoke of how they refer people who are interested in opening a business or what they do when they get a referral for a potential business. He spoke particularly of the importance of their website as an important first portal, as well as the value of people meeting with the Small Business Development Center. Brennan Duffy from the RRA concurred with Steve about the process. Lyle spoke of how all the groups work together and in fact share physical space. Alderman Garuso acknowledged the work the groups are doing and shared his appreciation for their focus. He offered to help in any way he could. This is for information only. The meeting concluded at 6:40 PM.
Thank you, Alderman Etori. Is there any questions? I am...
Nice job, Alderman Etori.
Hearing no questions, comments, I will move on. Reports of representatives, we have none on the agenda. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication, we have none. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? I'm sharing none. So we have miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business.
So, Mr. President, I just wanted to let the board know and others listening in on this know that we're not holding the general committee meeting at St. Joe's on Thursday, November 5th, because the city just plain doesn't have the technology to be able to do a hybrid yet, and also this board is working on ways to open up meetings so that we can meet, and we haven't come to a conclusion as to how we're specifically going to do that going into the future. So that meeting on November 5th, this coming Thursday, will be all virtual, and I believe you're going to run it there from City Hall and chaired by Alderman Clifford. So I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of that so that they're not showing up down at St. Joe's thinking they're going to be going to a general committee meeting when it's not being held down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Depoy. Alderman Garuso?
Yes, I just wanted to make a suggestion. A hundred years ago, when Mike Valentine was running Peg TV and he was doing it out of the Stafford Tech, I used to go up and we would do, I guess forums, whatever, and I would have tons of them, and we would do them right on TV, have people at home call in, we would have analysts, and I'm sure with the new big building, why I said the Stafford, it was very small up there, but Alderman Depoy should maybe get a hold of Peg. They've got that huge building now compared to what they had, and consider something there. You've got the big, big room, you've got all the cameras, you've got people at home, they've got their TV sets, they can, I think you could put something like that together within a snap and just throw, if you want to get it done.
Superintendent Peters?
I think that's a great suggestion, however, Peg TV's not open right now. For me to do an interview there, it's me, I can only go by myself with one person, they're not even doing interviews at this point, so their facility is not open right now.
Thank you, Superintendent Peters.
I wasn't aware of that. Thank you, I didn't know that.
Are there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before this board?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Back it.
A motion to adjourn has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Be safe. Good night, everyone.
Adjourn. Vote, everybody, tomorrow. Have a good night.